...everyone to rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the July flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have roll call, Phyllis.
Kim Collier.
Here.
Craig Crewshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyne.
Here.
Tyler Coricamp.
Here.
And Wiley Stewart.
Here. You all emailed a copy of last month's, last meeting's minutes. Should all have had an opportunity to review those. Do I have a motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same? That's passed. First thing on the agenda tonight is a proclamation that we will read. SAFE has come to me, actually it was Sandy Brown. SAFE is an acronym for Supporting All Families Every Day in Adams County. And the month of April, since our next meeting isn't until I think April 5th, I thought we would do this now, ahead of April. The month of April, we will proclaim as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. So if I could, I will read this official proclamation from the City of Decatur. Whereas child abuse and neglect is a complex and ongoing problem in our society affecting many children in the Decatur and surrounding area, and whereas every child is entitled to be loved, cared for, nurtured, feel secure, and be free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse and neglect, and whereas it is the responsibility of every adult who comes in contact with a child to protect that child's inalienable right to a safe and nurturing childhood, and whereas Decatur has dedicated individuals and organizations who work daily to encounter the problem of child maltreatment and to help parents obtain the assistance they need, and whereas our communities are stronger when all citizens become aware of child maltreatment prevention and become involved in supporting parents to raise their children in a safe and nurturing environment, and whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, religious and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, whereas all citizens, community agencies, faith organizations, businesses will work to increase their efforts to support families. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Decatur, Indiana hereby proclaims the month of April 2016 to be Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Signed on this 15th day of March 2016, Kenneth L. Meyer, Mayor. I've signed it and I've put our seal on here, and so April will officially be Decatur Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Is there someone from the group who could be a spokesperson and just say something about your... And if you would, this microphone here is on, so if you just kind of... Because we do record our meetings.
I just wanted to thank everybody, especially Ken, for helping proclaim this month of April to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. It's something that we cared a lot about, formed back in 2012, and have just really grown with the support of the community and a lot of donations and help from them. So we'll pass these around in the pinwheel. The pinwheel is kind of a symbol of the childhood that we want children to have, a happy, carefree childhood. And so we're going to pass that, those around, and also a pamphlet. There are several events that will happen in April, and so if you could join us for any of those, it would be wonderful. We're going to have a courthouse ceremony on April the 5th, the Tuesday at noon, just to, I don't know, show a celebration of the families and children that we have in our area, and also have an honor too for one of the local organizations that really gives their heart every day to the children. So there's those kind of events, the carnival, we're going to be doing our cupcakes in Canada, just several events, so anything you can attend would be great. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks. You can have this. Yeah. W N. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Ken. Of course, Ken. Thank you.
Can I get a couple of?
Give me three.
I only need two.
No, I need two.
Yep.
I was going to say, because I know how that works. Okay, thank you. Thank you, ladies. Just give me a second.
I would like to thank the group because it is definitely a need in our community and every community, that we have children that are abused, even though we sometimes do not want to believe that, we do. So thank you for keeping this organization live and active.
Ken, if I could add one thing too, Terry Hall will be here the last of March and April 1st, and he will be doing the body safety program at the schools in the area, but there is a Monday night program at 7 o'clock, I believe.
April 1st, no, April 1st is Friday.
Yeah, whatever that Monday, I can't think of that offhand, but that Monday at 7 is a middle school. That's a community program, so if you guys want to come out and hear what Terry has to say, two programs.
Is he doing all schools? I mean...
North Adams, Zion, Big Joe, Ascentral, and yeah, and we're adding a couple preschools. One for Head Start, and there will be a preschool program Thursday night to at Church of God.
And I think, next year, South Adams has to go in with us too.
Wow.
So we are spreading.
But he's a terrific guy.
That's Monday, April 4, Sandy.
No, that Monday before that, March.
Huh? March 28. Last Monday of March. 28, my pardon. March 28.
But y'all invited out, I mean, it's just an open program and...
Will there be a press release to the newspaper on about this?
Yes, we had one go in already, and there'll be another one soon.
Okay, good. Thank you so much for coming. You can stay for the rest of our meeting, or you... Do what you would. Okay. Next thing on our agenda would be a request for a commercial tax abatement. Here this evening, we have Fred Sugar representing, I believe, Dolco. Is that their official name, or?
It's actually Technoplex.
Technoplex.
And their division. With me is Greg Meyer.
Okay.
He is the Director of Finance. We have the plant manager, Jim Bongardner, and Linda Cassell is going to be here just to answer anything that has to be added, but she's going to stay back there for a number of reasons. Anyhow, to introduce this, Greg is going to pass out to you some background about what Dolco is and what it does. The...
Thanks.
They are going to, they would like an abatement for $5 million of equipment.
Thank you.
And they expect to be keeping all of their present employees and adding an additional 20 new employees, which should have a payroll and benefit package that permits to about $1.1 million. So it's quite a bit, really, truly. Greg is going to tell us all about it, so Greg, I'll...
Yeah, we'll kind of go through a little bit of just the information, but the last couple of pages will show you the equipment we're looking at installing at the plant. This is business growth for us. There's some new business that we've been awarded by a major retailer on egg cartons, and we need to do an expansion to be able to satisfy that customer's requirements. So that's what's driving us to do the capital spend and ask for the abatement. We are, we are asking for a seven-year abatement. The reason we are, this equipment that we will put in will last potentially 30 to 40 years. We've got extruders that went into our facility in '72 that are still operating. We've done enhancements to them, so they are actually productive. They're not '72 vintage anymore, but very productive pieces of equipment. Dolco started back in 1990, or 1966, as a joint venture between Dow Chemical and Olson Brothers, and they were the company that made the first foam egg cartons. For our business, we are about 70% egg packaging. The rest of it splits between other polystyrene packaging products, such as apple trays, food service, food packaging, processor trays, mushroom containers. That's what our business is made of. We have five locations across the US, New Jersey, Georgia, Texas, State of Washington, and then this plant.
Is that Technoplex or Dolco?
That is Dolco Packaging. And let me give you a little bit of background of where we fit into Technoplex. Dolco back in 1996 was acquired by Technoplex, and then in 1997, we were actually merged into Technoplex. So our legal name is Technoplex, but we do business, and the market knows us purely as Dolco Packaging. So it's a DPA as Dolco Packaging. And over time, Technoplex has changed as well. They were a single plant that did, they competed directly against us, and they bought up Dolco at that point. So it was a small fish really taking on a bigger fish. But since then, they've acquired a lot of businesses. And in the, in the document that I have given you, shows you a bit of what Technoplex is all about. You see Dolco is one of the companies, but there's 10 companies in their portfolio. And if you look at what we do, we're healthcare, we're specialty products, we're food and beverage, so there's really three business segments to what Technoplex is all about. Technoplex is owned by a private equity group, American Securities, out of New York City. American Securities also is the owner of Metal Dine over at Bluffton, so they are out and about, so they, they are a private equity firm. So that gives you a little bit of background about Technoplex. The equipment we're looking, and there's a little bit more information if you want to read what they do, because there's some very high-tech products that Technoplex makes, surgical tools. We do compounding of basic resins for the medical industry. We do the seal lids that go on to pharmaceutical bottles. So we're in a fairly interesting market with Technoplex. Dolco is a little bit different, because we're in the packaging side of the business, but we, we do a lot of business. For Dolco Packaging, we're about half of the US production of egg cartons. Right now, we do about 1.5 billion units a year. The Indiana plant here does about half of that. So you can see where this plant fits into the Dolco group. We are about a third of the sales of Technoplex, so we're a fairly significant part of their The equipment, we're, we are asking for a five-year amount on the abatement, and it's a significant addition to the manufacturing. Yeah, a $5 million, but a seven-year abatement. If you go to this page of the document, we'll start walking down through some of the equipment. An extruder is a very primary piece of equipment in our facility. Right now, we have five extruders. This will put a sixth extruder into the building. And it is a very significant capital investment, because you've got a lot of piping and tubing and feed systems that go along with the extruder part of it. So you end up with a $2 million piece of equipment once you get an extruder put in place. And then if you go to the next page, there's got to be support equipment that will take extruded sheet and convert it into containers. One thing I didn't show on here is an egg carton printer, because we make our own printers. They're a fairly high-speed printer, but other manufacturers don't have the speed that we have, so I didn't show a picture of that. The outside of the building will not change dramatically. It'll go into our existing footprint. There will be some dock, dock door work that will be done to add some more loading docks. There'll be an outside silo for base resin storage, because we will be moving more resin through the building. So we, we're just here to answer any questions you have about the project. The start time probably will be in the month of May. We expect to be completed with it next February. We expect to hire 20 people in this process, and it's pretty, we feel very confident that 20 people will be needed, because it's very specific to a piece of equipment is where the heads go. So it's not pie in the sky. With this equipment, there will be that many people that will be required. So questions from the council?
You mentioned at the beginning that this new piece is primarily to make an egg carton. It's a different egg carton from what you're...
No, it's, it's going to be more of what we do.
Just more of what?
It is more of what we do. We, it is a slightly different version, so there's some tooling that will go with it. But it's, it's similar to what we do today. We have other customers that are using the design today, and it will be additional tooling for that, so...
If I understand you, you said correctly, so Dolco nationwide produces 50% of all egg cartons, 50% of those done here.
Yes.
So Decatur produces 25% of the national...
25% of US usage of egg cartons, that is correct.
Another fantastic fact I did not know. But what, what happens with this? Does that percentage go up?
It will go up some, yes. We're, we're talking about another 80 million units that we're going to be doing in a very short period of time. So, and that's an annual, 80 million is an annual pace of the business that we're going to be putting on.
I just wanted to first thank Dolco for being a part of the community. When we read through some of these things, and you realize they're a big company in town, but you, I kind of take for granted that you have 220 employees.
Yes.
Eleven, I read right, 11.1 payroll. I mean, it was very...
That's plenty payroll.
Very significant.
The other thing that's unique about our business is this facility is also the business lead for our business unit, so we have, the executive people from Dolco Group are here. So that's another side of it that kind of gets hidden from the community. You look at the plant, but we support the other five locations from this location.
Tim, if you could kind of brief council as to the procedure and what we have done in the past, and why we've done things like this in the past?
Well, the procedure is that declaratory resolution would be presented and acted upon by council. That's the first step in the process. The next would then be holding a public hearing on the declaratory resolution, the statement of benefits. After the public hearing, a confirming resolution would then be presented and acted upon by council, if you're inclined to grant the abatement. The, I think traditionally, the city has given five-year abatements on equipment and 10 years on real estate. You have the ability to give a greater abatement than five years on equipment, or a greater ability even on it, on real estate. So it's a judgment call on the part of council as to what you're willing to do, and, you know, the idea of an abatement is, it's not a taking away of revenue, it's phasing in tax revenue. And I, I don't necessarily like that phrase, "abatement," because it sounds like you're taking something away. You're just delaying when that tax revenue comes into being. You're phasing it in over a period of time. The advantage is that it creates additional job opportunities within the community, and certainly one of the things that's typically looked at by a legislative body such as yourself that would act on this kind of request is, what's the impact in terms of that job creation? What type of annual payroll is offered, and what impact is that investment with regard to the stability and future commitment to staying in the community? And, you know, from what Mr. Meyer has explained, it sounds like it's a pretty significant investment for a company that has long roots here in Decatur.
Comments from council?
Do you by chance know, of the 220 employees, this is just curious, of the 220 employees you have, how many of them are Adams County or Decatur residents?
We were talking about that today, and we were thinking probably Adams County represents maybe 80% of our employee base, so... Decatur maybe is a little bit less, because you pull from Burn and Geneva and that area, but I would say we're about 80%.
You run three shifts or two shifts or?
We run 24/7.
Right.
So we run 12-hour shifts, seven days a week.
12-hour shifts.
So it is continual operation.
Did you use, you recently did three shifts.
We used to be three shifts, running five days on the forning side. The extrusion process, because of the scrap development, started up and shut down, that ran seven days. But we converted a year and a half ago to the 12-hour shifts. And part of that was driven by the need for more volume in the marketplace, so...
I've just heard an employer or two mention that.
I do appreciate, Tim, how you explained, you know, the abatement, and it is a phasing of tax revenue for the city. I'll admit, there is hesitation because of what's been going on in our areas, our communities, and, you know, across, historically, there have been cities that's been left holding, you know, Fort Wayne had it at the airport with Kitty Hawk, you know, and I, that doesn't, I'm not trying to say that's reflecting a view, but there is consideration of that. And you have presented a history of being here, and, you know, what you're presenting is a pretty strong commitment. And I know life doesn't have total guarantees, particularly when you're talking about manufacturing, things can change quickly. But I just wanted to share that there is that hesitancy.
Yeah, one of the general comments on our type of business, you can't just very quickly set up an egg carton producing facility. There's a lot of piping, and we recycle all the material internally to our plant. So when you trim out an egg carton, it's piped back through the system. There's pretty sophisticated RTO units that combust, we use butane as the blowing agent to puff the material. It's not a very quick industry to get into the production. That's one of the reasons why we've been very successful with it. And, and we have good market acceptance of our product. It does protect eggs, so...
As Tim said, we've, I don't think, at least in the 12 years I was on council, I don't think we've ever done a seven-year abatement. So it's not that we don't want to do an abatement, I'm not sure on council's...
But it has been done. I spoke this week with the mayor of Burn, and the mayor and council of Burn, and they have...
They've done 10-year abatements on equipment.
Yeah. For large-scale operations that are happening within the county. Again, we talked many times of economic development, many times that's not bringing something new in, it's helping those that are here expand and do more, so...
Yeah, and I agree with that. We need to support the businesses and industry that we have.
And by Styrofoam egg cartons, not those paper ones.
My wife even recycles egg cartons.
So what's the next step?
Well, the next step, I think, is to get a motion for the resolution, declaratory resolution for the designation of the Economic Revitalization Area. However, does this in here specifically have the seven-year in here?
I mean, do we have to determine the seven-year tonight?
Yes, you need to determine that.
Yeah, in the declaratory resolution, and...
That's a blank in here?
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay. So that's just, you know, like I said, I think that's something the council needs to discuss. It's not my call, it's council's call. Tim, any more input? Mr. Sugar?
The, I too had talked to, well, I talked to Larry Macklin, more so because I was trying to get an overall picture of what was going on, and what I had heard about on super abatements. The thing that has concerned me for some time is, I just didn't feel like we were making any progress in Decatur attracting and growing, and it seemed like Burn was getting all the advertising. You know, the, I think, you know, I hate to think that we're in competition with Burn, because I always thought they really didn't care, or it didn't seem to be a drive down there. But apparently they, you know, changed their mind, or something's going on. But in any event, you know, we have a longtime corporate producer here that's asking for our assistance, and I'm talking, when I say our, I mean the City of Decatur, to continue what it does, because it's, bottom line is, it's got to produce for whoever's in charge and wants to make sure the money's there. And if they don't, they walk, or else they can produce it cheaper.
Sure.
And that's my biggest concern. And so I, the, they're, they're only asking for seven, they're not asking for 10. It, it seems like, from a competitive standpoint, the number of dollars, you know, that's 5 million, it's pretty substantial. The examples that I've been seeing earlier were smaller, the less than a million. And so what I was thinking, you know, more and more, that supports 20 new people, job-wise, a payroll of 1.1 million for those new people. That's quite a bit. When I started doing math comparisons, I have special terms for statistics, but they're lovely things, you can play with them any direction you want. But you can make statistics here that show that, if you take the current Adams County tax rate, which is about, if I got my numbers right, 1.6247, somewhere in that area, and that's all your county income taxes. And you think about how the legislature is forcing us out of property tax and into income tax.
Right.
And you think about, you know, you take that percentage, and you multiply that times 1.1 million new jobs, and you get around 17,000 a year. Now you do that times 30, you get some fantastic numbers. It's over $500,000. And you compare that to, I figured this, you know, at both the five years and the seven years on, you know, the calculation benefits, on how the, what the tax benefit is to Dolco, that's 46,000. When I look at that 535 over 30, and I look at the 46 to get them to do it, I'd say, boys, it's a no-brainer. But, you know, gentlemen, you're the ones in charge, and you've got to make that decision. You know, when I start pressing that math, those are the kind of numbers I see coming out of it, and the trend I see, more than anything else, you know, I want to see Decatur competitive, and I'd like to see, you know, as much as we can, support these industries that we have. That's my thoughts. Appreciate the chance.
Could you, could you repeat that, like, Ken, Fred, as far...
The math?
Not the whole thing.
The math?
The, you compared five years to seven years.
Five years to seven.
What was that amount again?
I was seeing Larry Macklin, as I mentioned, to do a cross comparison on Indiana tax abatement results, and the estimated tax abatement savings is what I was looking at. And I did the total for seven years and the total for five years, and the difference between those two numbers is 46,000. Now, as, you know, Tim Baker pointed out for us, or for you, the, it's really not an abatement like it was taken away as much as it is, it's just push it back. But the, when you think about those two years on it, you know, at least on, on this particular, you know, statistical report that was prepared, and I got these again from Mr. Macklin, when I think about the income tax, compare that to the property tax numbers that is foregone in its test, boy, I just, you know, we're being pushed into income taxes, and I... in a sense, boy, I just, you know, we're being pushed into income taxes and I see the income taxes going out.
Are you suggesting we increase that rate?
Uh, no, no. I just like it at this level. I don't, you know, what worried me was, you know, I took that off of this year's income tax returns for the two thousand fifteen returns on the automatic calculator. And I'm not sure what more is in the pipeline that's already been approved to raise that rate up. So that may be shy by a small percentage. It could be point one seven next year and I don't know.
One thing I will interject, if you were to, in the declaratory resolution, grant the seven years is what is requested, you do have the ability in the confirming resolution to modify the, because what, you have three choices. You can either confirm the declaratory resolution, you can confirm and amend it. So you could reduce it back to five years at that point if you chose to. Or you can rescind, you can basically rescind the declaratory resolution. You have three choices.
This will all be after the public hearing?
It would be after the public hearing. So, you know, if you're inclined and you want to give this some thought, if you want to hear, give the opportunity for the public to weigh in on it, you could include the seven-year abatement in the declaratory resolution and then determine in the confirming resolution whether you ratify that or you wish to amend it at that point.
So with what you just said, if we would tonight go five percent and come that time after the, you cannot increase it at that point.
I would recommend you go the other way.
Right.
You do seven and then reduce it if you're inclined to do it.
Legally, you can't increase it, right?
Right.
So this is kind of interesting for, I don't know, it was two years ago when the state passed the super abatement, you know, that you could go a hundred percent for ten years as opposed to a phase-in for ten years. Allen County had put it in practice, Burn started utilizing it. I think there was three, Burn Furniture, FCC, and First Bank of Burn that all, that utilized it. But the thing that goes along with that, though, is the math has to work out from the, what kind of jobs are being brought, what's the difference in income. So we at that time, I mean, we discussed it, but we kind of kicked it down the road. And I think if we're in a situation now where we're having to deal with this, we're having to ask it, but I think we do need to put pen to paper ourselves and figure this thing out. And because, my concern with the seven years is that that's precedent. We just opened that, you know, and because, up to this point, precedent has been five. That's what we did for the last two that came up here was Midstates Tool and Gilpin, well, actually three, and Hoosier Pattern on property, right? Because Keith installed that big piece of machinery. So that's what we've been operating off of. I think you could, I think there's a big argument between the two. If you look at personnel, numbers being hired, because those did not bring in twenty jobs. My only concern may, I agree with the income tax thing, that that also assumes that they're Adams County residents. And we have no way of, you know, nobody can guarantee that. But, so I think it is something that we need to start thinking about and looking at. And we even reached out to other communities at the time to see what their stipulations were, what were the requirements to be a super abatement? You know, what was the scoring metric? And we just have not done that. I think obviously we're at a point, as you point out, okay, not say our hand is being forced, but if we're going to look at Burn, why, you know, if a company's coming to locate, looking at Burn or Decatur, what tools do we have as well? Honestly, great, fantastic for Burn, it helps Adams County, we need to understand that too. So focus on Adams, not specifically, all I'm saying is that, I mean, we have to talk about it, we have to think, start thinking about this and understanding what our tripwires are. Because if we don't, then we just, it's a blank precedent of seven years.
Agree.
We'll let you consider ten years on that. When you look at the income that's coming off of these jobs that are coming in, I mean, it does add a lot to the community. When you look at that amount of money on an annual basis, it's feeding through the community. And it's not just the jobs that Dolco's providing, it's the other jobs that are supported around Dolco by the addition of these jobs.
So if we set it at seven percent?
At seven.
I mean, I'm sorry, seven years tonight?
Yes.
And then we go through the public hearing and then at that time we finalize it, we...
Then you have the opportunity at that time to amend it by confirming it, but with a five-year abatement as opposed to a seven, if that's what you wish to do.
I think one more important factor to point out is they mentioned they have five facilities under the Dolco group. They're choosing to put it here.
Right.
And not one of those other plants.
But they can also choose to relocate. Not suggesting they are, but that is outside.
He made it sound like it'd be pretty hard to do that.
It would be very expensive to relocate. I hear that tonight, but...
Logistically, the plant is in the best position out of the five, deserves our customer base in the Midwest. So there's very slim chance of moving based on that.
We need to, we need to take that and promote it for other...
That's right. That's absolutely right. Yeah, you're, you're...
Crossroads in Indiana.
I like a motion... I'd promote it, but also if there's supporting industries or businesses that would benefit, Dolco to have them closer by, then maybe we should be outreach recruiting or trying to attract them to this community to help bolster Dolco's business.
Good point. I'll make a motion that we go with the...
What we're doing is we're making a motion...
Seven years.
To have the declaratory resolution read based on the seven with the...
Go ahead, just say based on the seven.
Based on the seven.
Seven-year abatement. So you're introducing declaratory resolution number two thousand sixteen dash three, which would allow for a seven-year abatement?
Yes.
Have a motion, have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same? Motion is carried. So the next thing would be the public hearing. Tim, what, we've got to have it read, yes.
And then you adopt it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, declaratory resolution number two thousand sixteen dash three, Common Council of City of Decatur, Indiana, declaratory resolution for the designation of an economic revitalization area upon the application of Technoplex Inc., DBA Dolco Packaging. Whereas the Common Council of City of Decatur, Indiana, has been requested by Technoplex Inc., Doing Businesses Dolco Packaging, hereafter applicant, to designate pursuant to IC six one point one, twelve point one two, the following described real estate situated in Adams County, Indiana, an economic revitalization area. And there should be attached a legal description. See attached Exhibit A. Whereas said described property is located within the jurisdiction of the Common Council of City of Decatur, Indiana, for the purposes set forth in IC six one point one, twelve point one two. Whereas this council is determined based on the information provided, if the applicant, including the statement of benefits form, because of the growth of the applicant, changing market demands, continuing demand for its projects, products, new machinery needs to be installed at the site to meet the demands of the applicant's... Yeah, you didn't say short title. Whereas the estimated cost of rehabilitation of the property and new manufacturing equipment expected to be installed is reasonable for similar construction and equipment of that type, I'm trying to do this quickly. The estimated number of individuals who employment, whose employment will be retained, the estimated number of individuals who will be hired as a result of the installation of the new manufacturing equipment rehabilitation of the property. The estimated annual salaries of those individuals whose employment will be retained in the estimated annual salaries of the estimated number of new employees who will be hired because of the installation of new manufacturing equipment and rehabilitation of the property can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed redevelopment of the totality of those benefits in addition to other benefits is sufficient to justify the deduction. Whereas the rehabilitation of the property and installation of new manufacturing equipment at the site by the applicant will be to the benefit and welfare of all citizens and taxpayers of the city of Decatur and surrounding communities now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of City of Decatur, Indiana, that the area herein above described should be and hereby is declared to be an economic revitalization area as that term is defined and intended in IC six one point one, twelve point one at sea. It also resolved that the abatement permitted pursuant to this resolution is for personal property, i.e. new manufacturing equipment is set out in IC six one point one, twelve point one, four point five, and twelve, and five point five. And buildings and structures is set out in IC six one point one, twelve point one three, and twelve point one five. It also resolved that the deduction permitted for the personal property, i.e. new manufacturing equipment, is allowed for seven years. It also resulted in the failure of the applicant to submit the complete statement of benefits form to the Common Council before the initiation of rehabilitation or the installation of new manufacturing equipment for which the applicant has or will seek a deduction pursuant to IC six one point one, twelve point one, is expressly waived pursuant to six one point one, twelve point one, eleven point three. It also resolved that the failure to designate the area owned by the applicant of an economic revitalization area before the initiation of the rehabilitation of the property and installation of new manufacturing equipment for which the applicant has or will seek a deduction pursuant to twelve point one at sea is expressly waived pursuant to twelve point one, eleven point three. It resolved that there shall be here, there shall be published a notice of the adoption and substance of this resolution according to IC five thirty-one, which notice shall name a date for the public hearing in this matter and state that at the conclusion of said public hearing, the council may take final action either confirming, confirming and amending, or rescinding the proposed designation. It also resolved that this resolution be filed with the assessor of Adams County. It finally resolved that if any part clause or portion of this resolution should be judged invalid or unconstitutional, such invalidity or unconstitutionality shall not affect validity or constitutionality of this resolution as a whole or any part clause or portion of this resolution. Adopted this fifteenth of March, two thousand sixteen by the Common Council of City of Decatur, Indiana, signature for the mayor, City of Decatur, Task Bill, Jay Wettright, City Court Treasurer.
Now, for those of you that have never heard a complete resolution for abatement, now you have.
Do it by short title.
Generally, when, when we introduce a resolution like this, we introduce to have it read by short title only and it takes, Tim, about fifteen seconds. So a lesson learned by all of us this evening.
We don't want to go through that again.
I don't know, it was interesting, though. It wasn't interesting.
Yeah, good job, Tim. So now we have introduced the declaratory resolution two thousand sixteen dash three. I guess now I need to have it passed.
Yes.
To...
You know, you know that number on three.
We need a motion for passage.
Yep.
So we have a motion and a second for passage of declaratory resolution two thousand sixteen dash three. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose the same. Okay, now we've accepted that and...
Okay, the next step is then you have a public hearing that'll be advertised. You have to legally advertise it, so it has to be advertised at least ten days prior to the public hearing itself. And the overlapping taxing districts also must be notified by mail. And I'll defer to Fred on that to take care of that. Typically, the applicant is responsible for doing the advertising, probably through Phyllis, but also then doing the mailing and providing proof of that at the time of the public hearing.
Okay. I'll have a, I think I sent a copy of the form of declaratory resolution already to Phyllis. I presume that was what she read it from. And then on the notice of public hearing form, I'll get with Phyllis tomorrow morning and she can sign it and then I'll get it published. And if possible, we would have enough time with that ten days to be on the April fifth.
Right.
And so we'll put it on the April fifth agenda.
So we would have the public hearing on April fifth? And then could we follow with the...
Yes. You would, you would start your meeting, spend the meeting, go into the public hearing, you'd have your public hearing, you close the public hearing, go back into your regular meeting, and then you would adopt, take action on the confirming resolution.
Okay.
Again, thank you for your confidence, Decatur.
Yep, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Next up would be an update on our First Street Sewer Project. Tim's going to give us an update on any property acquisitions that we've done since we last spoke and also easements that may be either made or close to being finalized.
Okay, there's ten or twelve properties that we're working on. Most we've accomplished, if you start at the south end and move north, properties that we've acquired either for the First Street Sewer Project or that have become available for acquisition that could result in the riverfront development, which is part of our comprehensive plan. We start with the GKB property. That purchase agreement has been negotiated, the agreement is prepared. We're waiting for Mr. Cre to get back from Florida in order to get that signed so that we can finish that up. The Loshi property, we have acquired the easement that we needed there. We've also entered into a purchase agreement to ultimately buy the property. The Appleholder property, we entered into a purchase agreement and completed the purchase. The Macklin property, we have easements that were obtained. The Marx Heating and Air property, we purchased. The Ortiz property, we purchased. The Rice property, we purchased. We have obtained an easement from the Chamber. We have obtained an easement from the Franz family, which is the old first, or First Merchant's Bank building. We have a tentative agreement worked out with the Stanleys with regard to acquisition of an easement and possible purchase of their property if they can get a lien released. We're waiting to meet with the Conklin family. And we've met with Zwick's and we have a tentative agreement with them and we're waiting for revised legals in order to finish that one up. So we're very close to completing the acquisitions needed for the sewer project. And I believe Nate indicated that he's looking at tentatively submitting advertising for that project on March twenty-eighth, I think it was, with the expectation that we would do bid letting in latter part of April. Pardon? Receive bids in, in April twenty-sixth. Yeah, sorry. And then with that schedule, probably the project would start in sometime around July, you think, Nate?
Anytime. I mean, since we already have the money in hand, we don't need to go back to the lending institution or the bondholders. And so we get work, we get work as soon as permanent carroll in place and the contractor is ready to work. So that could be June, more likely late June, fourth of July.
And hoping to complete the project in early December.
Any comments from council on the First Street project? Okay? If not, just kind of a question for Roger, I want to throw out to you. Have you heard any more from anyone on sidewalks since our last meeting?
Well, Matt, just give me, said tonight, a couple, a couple more, I'd like to take this. Heard back, but we've been in contact with majority of them that were on the list, it's just about a hundred percent for this case.
So at this time, about how much do you have tied up out of the fifty thousand?
About half of it.
About half of it, okay. All right. And council, going forward, again, we can put it all into a fifty-fifty fund. We can designate any particular areas. We looked at Winchester Street. Any other areas that we would...
Winchester Street is not really finished, is it?
No.
We did half of it last year, essentially.
Not even quite half of it, I don't think. There's still, we couldn't complete it all yet this year. Yeah, is this the figures?
Down to Studebaker.
Is that something we'd like to...
We have sixty-nine thousand dollars more.
Can you, I think?
Yeah, but it's, we're not going to get there this year.
We wouldn't. It's not enough to complete it, but if we do a little bit more...
Roger broke down it for that Winchester Street. The east side from Grant to Legion was about seventeen thousand. The west side of the street from Grant to Lyman's nineteen thousand. And the east side of the street from Grant to Lyman's twenty-three. And the west side of the street from Studebaker to Allen was about eight thousand.
We're about sixty-nine thousand total.
I anticipate, you know, more publicity on it. Once we get started, I mean, I anticipate another ten to fifteen thousand of that. You know, there's a possibility yet this year for this individual property.
The west, the west side from Grant to Lyman's, there is no sidewalk there. The road sits higher than the sidewalk. It's like gravel. It's probably, I mean, in my district, it's probably only where sidewalks.
So is that one of those areas where if you put... So, is that one of those areas where if you put a sidewalk in, the yard is going to be below, I mean, the level of the sidewalk?
I don't know how that works with the sidewalk part of it, but it's, I take my kids down that road. You can't even take a kid on a bicycle, or it's, it's bad. The road is actually higher than the sidewalk.
Are you suggesting that's what we would try to accomplish?
That would be my suggestion.
Which area was that from where to where?
I believe it's from Grant to Line Street, where the sidewalk is actually lower than the road, and there really is no sidewalk there.
Is this the east side of the street or the west side of the street?
I would consider it the north side.
They're both bad.
The east side's probably the worst, but you, none of, once you get in that stretch, it's probably worth much.
Roger and Jeremy, how do you go about doing that when the street is, you know, flush with the sidewalk, or, I mean, when you go putting a new sidewalk in, it's going to raise the elevation of the sidewalk to be higher than the people's front yards, wouldn't it?
Bottoms coordination, if you know that you're going to pave the areas, you know, you're going to replace the sidewalks. You're going to add additional building.
Mm-hmm, let's see it from the photo.
We're waiting a few times. Meeting that there was no building, it was just, you know, paved over, paved over, paved over. It has come up quite a bit. And we discussed this the last couple years, that we were kind of getting some initial building in some of the areas. By doing that, you, you almost really need to have enough money to do both sides of the section. You pave a lot of...
And in this case, that would take more money than what we have?
If that street...
In areas, yes.
That intersection of street scheduled to be paved, or, because you, you went almost to that point, correct?
Yeah, we had a patch last year, it was getting so bad, you know, the patch may last another year or two, you know, we'll have to get in more.
But that's not necessarily on your list for this year. That's part of the street.
All, all depends on what you guys decide on.
And when, we don't make, need to make a decision tonight, right? I mean, Roger, we can, we can, I just want council to ponder this. I think you all had a copy of this at the last meeting. You know, talk with your...
There's no doubt we want to do that section.
Yeah.
But we want to do it right.
We want it right, yeah.
Yeah. That was the intention when we did, the section we did do up to Legion Park, was to hopefully continue that now.
I think that's, since it started, like you just said, it just needs to continue. Now, how quickly...
And what was done last year is very nice.
Yep.
The council does have some money budgeted for capital improvements in their budget and also in the FCB fund. Those are other options if you don't want to exceed the money.
We can approach this later, too.
Right. Yep, that's what I'm saying. Okay. Just a matter of discussion tonight. Next would be the trucks that we discussed at this past council meeting. Jeremy has contacted the community that we're buying them from, and Phyllis has something, she wants to make a matter of record, I believe is what we would need to do with this, or...
We did get the bill of sales from the city of Hannah to purchase the two recycling trucks for forty-five thousand, and council had previously approved encumbrance seventy-four thousand from the sanitation department budget last year to this year's budget for a garbage truck box, and Jeremy was thinking that we could use that money to purchase these trucks. If that's okay, do you change that encumbrance to be for these trucks instead of for the garbage box? Do you have any problems with that?
Make a motion to go with his recommendation.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same. That's all the items from the agenda from the mayor's report. Couple things. We had a good visit, I think, this week. Jeremy, Melissa, Tim, and I went up and visited with NDOT, and it was, it was a good Some of the projects that are stellar application had on the list, will now come back and revisit with Greater Decatur at some point in time. Melissa, you're making faces. And decide whether or not, there has been a call, how do you say it, Jeremy? A call for projects? Yes. And, you know, what we want to turn in or apply, what's the word I want to use, Jeremy? Apply for on the call for projects. These projects, it's something where you would turn in the project now, the, you're competing with all a bunch of other communities. We can turn in as many projects as we want. You go through an interview process, all kinds of things, but eventually, certain projects are granted, and when that happens, they're looking at the year twenty-twenty, is that right, for these?
Twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one before it even starts.
Right, right. So...
It would be a twenty percent match, be an eighty-twenty project. Not all projects will qualify.
Right.
The only projects that will qualify is basically on system streets, and that is not paid for, and street skating is not paid for, a lot of different things. Their transportation company, so they're basically doing a lot of improvements.
Curb to curb, is what he said. If we do submit mobile projects, we're to prioritize them.
Basically, what you would do is you would work on the project estimates, come as opposed to an estimate that you feel is appropriate, you would apply for that project, and so many days, what they call this, communication, basically go work on your projects, why your project is better than the guy's. After so many days, and maybe a little, maybe a small, you consider, you, you can run the test, you're back on the office, and thank you all.
Okay. Department head reports. Craig, you have anything?
I just have a couple of things. First of all, next Wednesday, in motion with spring break week, we're going to have an open house, police department. It'll be from one to four o'clock in the afternoon. And also, I would like to inform the council that the officers' lockers that we ordered last year as of September, October, have finally arrived, and they're installed now, and they came in a third, larger than what we ordered, but we paid the same price, so we have a pretty good deal.
What day is the open house?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, I missed. Open house is Wednesday.
He didn't even go in. He has an office with a co-op.
And I was down at the police station last week, and I have to say that the lockers are very nice. They're very, very nice. So, I think you should have some happy patrolmen. Yes.
Very long hair.
Yep, yep, very nice. Roger?
Nothing, please.
Jeremy?
Give you a little information on what's coming out, what's coming up next week with activities with spring break. Starting April fourth through April the eighth, we will have the spring heavy trash collection. April the fourth, we'll start our yard waste collection. Currently, the guys have been basically starting the spring cleanup, going around fixing potholes, picking up limbs, running the street sweeper around, helping with the parks department kind of start prepping some of the parks that's been extremely wet in a lot of places to be able to be doing much more. As many of you have saw, we've been working along First Street on a couple of those properties. We should have the second property cleaned up tomorrow. Next week, obviously, spring break. We have several activities going on. And also, I will pass out the spring activity guide. That will explain migrations and everything that will be going on next spring. So, a lot of activities going on, coming up, but not everyone will be traveling to different places next week, so we always, I should partner with the different areas to offer activities that the children can be while they're off. Also, last night, the park board meeting, we discussed sponsoring a bus trip to Chicago Cubs Cincinnati Reds game on July the fourth. We realized it is a holiday, but there seems like there's a lot of interest for that game. It'd be like a one, one-twenty game in the afternoon. It will be a bus trip out of Riverside Center, right at a hundred dollars per person, it's like ninety-nine dollars. We do not have the tickets yet, but we'll be, we'll be getting those soon. So, anyone that's interested in a ticket, please see Ryan at Riverside Center, and he will get you set up with a ticket.
Now, was this trip to Chicago, or was it to God's country of Cincinnati?
Chicago.
Yeah, too bad.
Also, one other trip that we are planning is Decatur ride at Tin Cabs game. That will be August the thirteenth, it's a Saturday night. It's a seven oh five game. We have reserved, I'd have two-hundred-and-sixty-four seats so far. It will be a seven dollars a seat. There's no transportation included in this trip, but should be a pretty good night. We're going to market it as Decatur night. Talking with Ken and talking with Tin Cabs folks, it should be a pretty successful night.
Keep it up, a lot of good stuff.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, now, I want to give you guys the short version of some of that stuff. If you are interested in the games, Phil, please contact Ryan. Ryan Green out of Riverside, he will, he will get you set up with the tickets.
Tickets for the Tin Cabs, go on sale when?
They should be coming here anytime.
Okay. All right.
I would think here with them...
Ryan's going to hold those tickets, is that...
Yes.
This is a really nice piece. Are these available at City Hall, Riverside Center?
Ryan has them at Riverside Center. Ryan Green actually makes those. He does very well at the marketing and such for the, the Decatur County Parks Department. Spent a lot of time, and it's a very good job with this.
It's nice.
He just, actually, I think those have only been out about a week, so they're pretty current. Have all your registrations, the dates, who to contact, upcoming things, so it's real good information for us.
All right. Thank you, Jeremy. From the fire department.
We're here.
You're good. Dan?
Good.
Nate?
Just a quick thank you to the paper for covering the Alki Boom publication from Chris with our interlocal agreement with the groundwater conservation district, city homeowners, parks, and towns, and essentially a lesson learned, well attended, I think, of over forty people come in, both city and county representatives, elected officials, and different community leaders, come in and kind of see what our watershed role is, so that was actually a, I think, a really good example. So, sure is the same over, we put the work that she did to help put that together and the support that the city had and most of the, so thank you all for working on that.
Thank you, Nate. Ann?
Good night.
Melissa? Come on. Nothing for Melissa. Tim has some things, I think, tonight.
I do. Real quickly, I'm going to try to meet with Andy Glensner, who's the executive director of the Community and Family Social Services. They're the purchaser of the property, Jesse Turner-Holland over here, the old Bubbers Shopping Center out by Stratton, and we'll sit down with them and talk to them about acquiring property from them that would be part of our Wetlands Nature Preserve project. So, I talked to him today, and we're trying to get a meeting scheduled for Friday, so I'll keep you posted on that. Second thing is, one of the matters that we agreed to with the Macklin family, rather than pay them an additional amount for the acquisition of easements, they asked if we'd be willing to take down the building as part of the consideration that we paid to get the easements, and so that's been done. The second thing that they requested was, there's an alley that runs between two of their lots. There's no public use of that. It's an undeveloped alleyway between First Street and the river, and there's no utilities. We don't have any need for it, so they requested that that be vacated. They've signed a petition to vacate that. That needs to be set for a public hearing, so if you're going to have a public hearing on the abatement, you can have more than one public hearing in a meeting. If you want to delay that a couple of weeks and have that at the second meeting in April, you could do that as well. That's up to you, but the...
Can you do it one advertisement?
Pardon? It has to be legally advertised. Notice has to be advertised.
Just do it one advertisement?
Yes. So, the petition needs to be made a matter of record, so I would ask that somebody make a motion to that effect, and then we need to set the public hearing so that that can be advertised. And I have that prepared, and then also the ordinance that would be adopted once you have the public hearing, before the vacating of the...
I'd make that motion and request that we do it in the same public hearing so we can advertise at once.
It would be one public hearing.
Well, you can't, you have to have two separate advertisements. There's two separate public hearings. You can have, you can have more than one public hearing the same night, is what I'm saying. You can't combine them.
That's my motion.
Say it.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? Motion carried.
Last thing that I have, is in talking with Mark Murray and Stacy Summers and Christie Sturts regarding the jail annexation, the, the timing of that, we're probably going to need to initiate the process at the April fifth meeting in order to get it completed by July first. The July first date is significant because there's some additional changes in the legislation that's been enacted this, this past session that affects the ability to do the annexation in a simpler and more timely process, so we want to try to get it done before then. So, I'll talk to Mark and Stacy, but we'll have them file the super voluntary annexation petition by the April fifth meeting. At that time, you would introduce a resolution to adopt a fiscal plan and annexation ordinance, and you have to have a public hearing after that, and after the public hearing, then you approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal plan and adopt the annexation ordinance. The ordinance would be probably adopted on two different meetings, and then you have to publish that, and there's a thirty-day window that you, there's an appeal process for thirty days, and once that passes, then the annexation is effective. So, in order to meet that July one deadline and go through all these steps, we got to start it probably at the April fifth meeting.
Reconciliations that we discussed, met with the...
The, one of the issues that we're still trying to figure out, according to Christie, the zoning has to be done in the county before it comes in, and it would be carried over, whatever the zoning is. According to Stacy and Mark, they don't see anything in the statute that requires that, but they would be agreeable to having a petition to rezone through the city once it was in the city. So, you know, that's something that we need to iron out between now and April fifth, because Christie's saying that it's something that's required. I got to look at the statute, and I may talk to some other city attorneys, because there may be some case law involved in this rather than just, you know, be a statutory requirement, so that's something I got to sort out, but we'll try to do that. There were some other issues that we had discussed in the meeting, and one was, who's going to pay for the fiscal plan? Are they going to grant easements? Are they considering looking at a road extension? So, those are things that I think we want to try to get ironed out between now and April fifth as well.
Well, two public hearings, April fifth, and this annexation coming forth...
Do we need to make a motion on this, Tim, to get this moving?
No, it's really, they'll, they'll start the process by filing the, the application, so, or the... so, or the petition. But I'll talk to them and make sure that we're, everybody's on the same page in terms of the timing of this. The, the two public hearings, one is on the petition to vacate the alley, the other's on the abatement, so the annexation isn't until later.
Right. Okay. Right. Comments from the public? Any comments? No comments. Comments from council?
Just a question, Ryan, the Endot. This message that you sent out, that, did you talk, there seems to be like they put five million aside for Common Path sidewalk improvement?
Yeah. Is that?
We talked.
We asked that question, and the Endot staff was not familiar with the details of the program yet, as it is in New York.
I received more emails today, and they're really unclear.
You know how the Northeast Regional Partnership, they're not clear, same thing. It's not, they, they don't know.
We're gonna keep it posted as they learn more about this program within.
Because that sure would solve all our problems on Winchester.
They're gonna solve all our sidewalk problems.
Not necessarily, because they don't even know what a rural community, what the definition of a rural community is.
They might not even qualify as a rural community.
We're a rural community. But it also talks about site, or crosswalks and all that, so I was thinking about this intersection.
Things have changed over the last few years. That's the last call.
Gotcha.
Learn as we go.
Craig, comment?
I just wanted to say, we had a co-starters, what am I trying to say?
Facilitator training.
Facilitators training today out at Region Eight. We'll have Ryan and Noblet get ahold of both of you to give you a press release, and I'll get in contact with you guys on that. Went real successful.
Yes, it was. Any other comments? Phyllis, do you have anything tonight?
Thank you.
I'd like to have approval of the claims.
Second.
Have a motion to approve and a second for the claims presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn?
Aye.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed the same? We adjourn.